Well, welcome everyone back as we join back together after a week hiatus. So great to see everyone, happy to have you here and welcome everyone joining us online. Great to have you joining us. Job, chapter 34 is where we will begin and we're going to be taking our chapter chunks as we're getting near the end of this incredible book. And we will do a summary, of course, as we near the end of the study that will, well, we'll sum up everything that we've talked about, the themes here. And I'm hoping to have a little video too that I found that I can, looking on the copyright right now, but I think we'll be able to show it. And as we join with the online folks, would you join with me as we pray for our study this morning? Let's pray. "Great gracious God, open your word to us today. Make it a lamp unto our feet, a light to our path." Thank you for everyone joining us today, Lord. And Lord, thank you that you continue to speak to us through your word. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. All right, Job 34, the first nine verses. "Then Elihu answered and said, 'Hear my words, you wise men, and give ear to me, you who know; for the ear tests words as the palate tastes food. Let us choose what is right; let us know among ourselves what is good; for Job has said, 'I am in the right, and God has taken away my right; in spite of my right, I am counted a liar; my wound is incurable, though I am without transgression.' What man is like Job, who drinks up scoffing like water, who travels in company with evil-doers and walks with wicked men? For he has said, 'It profits a man nothing that he should take delight in God.'" Elihu, as a reminder, it's been a couple of weeks, is the, counted as one of the friends of Job, not the three that have been the dominant focus of these middle chapters of Job. Elihu shows up here at the end. And Elihu's unique in the respect that it seems that he is younger because he allowed the older men to speak. That was a custom. I mentioned this early on in our study, that it was a practice, a custom in the ancient world, that if an older person was teaching or speaking and you were younger, you allowed them to speak first. And then if you were so inclined, you would add your discourse, which is what it seems is happening here with Elihu. Elihu also is frustrated, as you could hear here, not only with Job, but with the three friends. Elihu believes that the friends have not done their job in convincing Job that he is basically a loser and should come to grips with his loser-ness and turn back to God and maybe, maybe, maybe he's got some hope that he won't end up in eternal sheol, or as we would call it today, hell, and get wise. But that's not going to happen because, again, Elihu, as we will see, and I'm going to jump ahead just a bit, when God starts to answer, God's going to address Elihu as well. We're going to also go forward to chapter 35, because I'm going to bring these two chapters together. So, chapter 35, and we're going to look at verses nine through 11 in this chapter. "Because of the multitude of oppressions people cry out; they call for help because of the arm of the mighty. But none says, 'Where is God, my Maker, who gives songs in the night, who teaches us more than the beasts of the earth and makes us wiser than the birds of the heavens?'" So what is going on here? Again, in chapters 34 and 35, Elihu is affirming that God is a God of justice. The bottom foundation argument here is that the universe works according to the plan of, and principles of God, how the world works. We all grew up at some level, some way, shape, or form, we were told, this is the way life works, right? You do this, you do that, you don't do this, you don't do that. There are certain elements in our American ethos that, you know, everyone has an opportunity, you work hard, go to school, do, there's the conventional wisdom, as we call it. Well, it was true also theologically, and that is, look, it's simple, not easy, but simple, simplistic. God blesses the just. God looks favorably upon those who are righteous and good and serve Him. Conversely, if you are a sinner and you are unjust, God will punish you. It's the retribution principle. And it makes sense. And again, as we looked at very early on, there are elements of truth to it. I mean, it's, it's true generally. If you do what you're supposed to do, if you keep your head down, as my dad used to say, keep your head down, do your job, you know, don't complain. Eventually, and certainly that's going to be rewarded in some way. If you are lazy, you show up to work late, I was talking with a business owner not too long ago, and some of you may understand this, he said, it's just challenging to get people to not only want to work, but when they do take the job to show up on time, to not leave early, or do other things that they're not supposed to be doing, but just that, you know, that ethic. And the reason that that is so frustrating is because you know that that's not how you're supposed to do your job, I mean, you get the idea. And so that's what Elihu's saying here, in God's terms. So if God is just, then, and Job has experienced all this, then there's some clearly issues with Job's life. But the injustice of God was one of Job's major laments, because Job is feeling that God is not being just with him. Job never, ever denied that he was not a quote-unquote sinner, that he was perfect. Again, he offered sacrifices for his children, which infers that he has to please God. He believed for most of his life that he was blessed because his life was going, going well. He was, he was famous, people recognized his faith. That was what was so troubling, because again, Job doesn't know, chapters one and two, he doesn't know what's going on with God basically proving to Satan that Job is a man of integrity. God believes in Job. And Job, God said to the devil says to, or the Satan says to God, "Look, you, he's going to curse you. At some point, he's going to curse you to your face, God, so why don't you just come to terms with it?" And God says, "No. I believe in Job's integrity, and I'm going to essentially," God says, "I'm going to stake my honor on Job's faith and integrity." But through this, not but, but in addition to this, Job is questioning that injustice here. And then what Elihu does here is he encounters, he counters Job, or Job's thoughts, with three arguments that prove that there is no injustice with God. So what are those? Well, first of all, if God is unjust, then he can't be God. It's an oxymoron. God by the definition is wholly not us. I think I've shared this with you many times, but by far the question that I probably get asked more when I'm in the classrooms here, especially with the younger kids, my younger grades, is, where did God come from? Who is, and we see that, and then the older, then they get a little bit older, it's, what does it mean that God is forever, or eternity? Does it mean that we're going to live forever? Because the idea of forever and ever and ever, and that there is a being that has always existed and didn't have a beginning or an end, is, it's really hard for us to understand as human beings, because we're human beings. And as I try to communicate best I can to say, by calling this person God, you're not calling him something else. You're not calling him a, an angel, you're not calling him a unique, or a, just a common spirit. God is God, and it's kind of a circular thing, but it's, but it's true. And by that, and the Bible affirms that if God is, God as God, he, one of his attributes is justice. He cannot be unjust. We may not understand God's working of that justice, but that doesn't mean he's not just. Just like for those of us who have, our parents have been parents, when our children have questioned our fairness, you know, every kid goes through the fairness season of, you know, that's not fair, you know, you're not now, especially if they have a sibling, you know, you're treating another one better, and we're, not knowing that you know other things that they don't. And that's where trust and love and faith come in. But again, Elihu says, "Well, Job, you can't claim that God is unjust, because then he's, he's not God. Second, if God is truly God, then he's perfect, and if he's perfect, then he cannot do any wrong." Can you kind of see the frame here of Elihu's argument? He's, he's doing something that C.S. Lewis said you don't have to do. Now, of course, Job was way before C.S. Lewis, but what did C.S. Lewis, C.S. Lewis said? "C.S. Lewis said, 'You defend God like you defend a lion; you get out of its way.'" And we don't have to defend God, His ways. Sometimes as a Christian, you may be asked by a friend who's not a believer, "Well, why does God allow this? Why does God allow that? Why, if you believe in God, why is this happening in your life? Why are you going, going through this?" And we can engage the conversation depending on, but we don't have to defend God. And that's what Elihu is saying here. He can't, he can't do wrong. So don't, Job, for one second, start blaming God for anything. And then thirdly, and finally, if God were unjust, then He must not see what's going on in the world. It's kind of the clinching argument here from Elihu, you know, so setting up, as a good lawyer would, and this is set in somewhat of a law case, a law court standing before the judge, pleading your case, having witnesses, or, in the truest sense of the word, what a lawyer is, a counselor, hey, an advocate, that's going to plead your case for you. That's what Job's been asking for. "I want someone to help plead my case before the ultimate judge." Well, the prosecuting attorney, attorney, so to speak, here, Elihu's saying, "Well, your premise is all wrong. One of the problems you have, Job, is that you're questioning God's justice, His nature, and you can't do that because of who He is. And we all know that's how the world works, because here's the truth. God is omniscient and sees all things. The word omniscient, all-knowing, is one of the divine attributes. There are essentially, depending on who you talk to, three primary divine attributes. God is omniscient, all-knowing, God is omnipotent, all-powerful, and God is omnipresent, can be everywhere at any time. God is the only being that can be omnipresent. The devil can't be omnipresent, the angelic world cannot be omnipresent. Only God, because God is God, can be everywhere at once. How does that work? I don't know. We don't know. But Scripture says that God is here, He's there. He's not far from you, He's with you, He's with anyone who calls upon Him as, as Lord. And as being omnipotent, all-knowing, and all-powerful, let me say it one more time, and I'll stop the, because I've said it differently now, but the omnis are also descriptions of what we're not as human beings. We're not all-powerful, we're not all-knowing, and we can't be everywhere at once, as much as we wish we were all of those things at times. But the older you get, the less you want to be all-knowing, and I think, anyway. Warren Wearsby, a biblical scholar, says this, "An unjust God would be as unthinkable as a square circle or a round triangle. If God were unjust, then there would be no just government on earth. As a respected elder, Job had participated in local government and had helped to bring justice to the afflicted." And that was referenced in chapter 29. So what Wearsby's saying here is that Elihu's right. I mean, what Elihu's arguing is right, but he's doing it in a way, again, that is discounting Job's struggles and his questions, which, as we've looked at myriad of times in this class, we dealt with it a little bit on Sunday, when we talked about grief and loss in Disciple U. When you go through seasons of grief, when you go through seasons of loss, there are always times of questioning, always times of wrestling, always times of unknowing, of powerlessness, of coming to terms with our limits, everything that makes us human. And those are the times very often, if you have a faith, that you ask God and you struggle with God, because, again, we know God's all-powerful, why has He not chosen to use that power in this situation? God is all, everywhere. Could He not have stopped that particular situation? Could He not have derailed the guy walking in with the assault weapon in New York? Could He not have stopped the floods in Texas? I was working out on Monday and was watching the news, and maybe some of you saw this, but this little girl who survived the floods in Texas wrote a song. Did you, did you see it? Man, I started crying on the elliptical when I'm starting to bawl and everything, but she, the song "Hallelujah," it's familiar, you know, it was a secret chord that David played, and it pleased the Lord. But she redid it according to the experience in Texas. And basically, bottom line, and you can Google it and go on YouTube, probably find it, but was, and she gave witness to this in front of the news people and everybody, that even though we don't, she, they didn't understand, and she lost friends and teachers and all of that, that God is still there, whatever that, that means. And the song "Hallelujah," as well as her rendition of it, is that, "Can you still sing hallelujah," which the word means praise God, "in the midst of the darkness as you do in the light?" And it's, it's a step of faith. It's, it's, it's a challenge, and sometimes it's hard to sing, as Job is saying here. And again, to come back to Job, that's what Job is saying. Can I get out? I'm not going to curse God. As angry as I am, as confused as I am, as everybody's telling me how bad I am, my family, my wife, the one person that's left in my family, but I will not, I will not curse God. But I still, I still want to know, "God, can you tell me something?" You know, I always keep thinking of, you know, I live, you got a lot of explaining to do. I mean, something, God, just, just show me what is happening here. And then in chapter 35, kind of start to tie this part up, is, of course, Elihu's absolute condemnation of Job. Elihu's done kind of, not that he was being easy in the beginning, but here is just flat out, "Job, come on, just get, get it together. God and God's ways are so far beyond what humans can know and understand that..." Elihu's, was concerned that Job understand that, so that Job could, Elihu's concern was that Job could not be restored. That was his fear, 35 to, let me read that again. "And Elihu answered and said, 'Do you think this to be just?' Again, Elihu's talking to Job. 'Do you say it is my right before God that you ask, what advantage have I? How am I better off than, than if I had sinned?'" So he's echoing Job's questions rhetorically, saying, "Job, are you really asking God these things? If you, you keep asking this, you keep treating God this way, there's no, no hope for you. You will not be restored if you had any hope to begin with. So quit questioning God. Just stop it." And then Elihu tells Job and his friends, and his friends, that the cry for God often arises out of the pain of suffering in life, not out of a genuine desire for God. And this is where I think this is something to think, to think about. Elihu's condemnation is, you are, you are calling out to God, not because you, you want to know Him, not because you, you want to comfort from God. You're calling out to God to criticize Him, to challenge Him, to tell Him that you can run the universe better than He can. And that, that you can't do, says Elihu. Now, I would come back the other way and say, okay, maybe, but there are times, and maybe we would, we regret it, and maybe in our better times, we, we, we wouldn't do it. But I still contend that even the cries in the dark, even the, the, "God, where are you?" is still, is, is, is evidence of faith. And we have no better model for that than Jesus Himself from the cross. "My God, my God, where are you? Why have you left me? Why? Where are you?" And again, I would say, we have this book, Job, for that reason. One of the reasons is to see that the relationship with God can be this deep. And to sum it all up, what Elihu is saying is Job's heart is wrong. This is a quote from Lutheran Study Bible on this, on this section of the text. "Elihu believes that Job has added unbelief to his sin by complaining so bitterly. In doing so, Elihu fails to consider some understandable human emotion on Job's part. Not all lamenting represents unbelief. Yet our own complaints about the conditions of our lives, though humanly understandable, can betray a weakness of faith. God may use affliction to strengthen our faith and to refocus our lives on the affliction endured by His Son for our salvation." All right. Let's go to chapter 36 now, and verses one through five, and chapter 37, verses one through five. "And Elihu continued and said, 'Bear with me a little, and I will show you, for I have yet something to say on God's behalf.'" Lucky God. "I will get my knowledge from afar and ascribe righteousness to my Maker; for truly my words are not false. One who is perfect in knowledge is with you. Behold, God is mighty and does not despise any; He is mighty in strength and understanding." And then chapter 37. "At this also my heart trembles and leaps out of its place. Keep listening to the thunder of His voice and the rumbling that comes from His mouth. Under the whole heaven He lets it go, and His lightning to the corners of the earth. After it, after it hears, after it, after it, His voice roars. He thunders with His majestic voice, and He does not restrain the lightnings when His voice is heard. God thunders wonderously with His voice; He does great things that we cannot comprehend." So now Elihu, and he's, as we will see, he's winding up his part of the dialogue here. He's now going to try a different tact with Job. If I can't get you, Job, to see personally your own lack of faith in crying out to God, in criticizing God, in not trusting in the justice of God, understanding God's character, well, I want you to consider His greatness now. And His greatness is particularly evident in the natural world. In theological study, we call this natural revelation. You know, as Christians, as believers, we believe that God reveals Himself naturally through creation, through the wonders of the world, through how the world works, and then supernaturally through His word. One way of revealing Himself is, leads to salvation, the other can, if you have eyes of faith, confirm that God is who He is as revealed in Scripture. And so Elihu's going to do here, and is doing here, is he's going to, to kind of highlight that natural part, when then, back then, it wasn't called natural revelation, but it's the same idea. Because in chapter 36, once again, Elihu is defending the justice and sovereignty, sovereignty now, of God. And then as we read in chapter 37, Elihu is continuing to extol the majesty, greatness, power, and sovereignty of God through descriptions of the natural world. First of all, there's thunderstorms and its effects. Many of you, I shouldn't say many of you, some of you grew up in the Midwest, I think, and I know the people I've talked to in the Midwest talk about the thunderstorms that used to happen, that seemed to not be so severe out here. Of course, as I'm, we're teaching this study, we just had a, what, the strongest earthquake in the known time, and was it 8.8 or something like that off of Russia? And the whole tsunami thing. My brother lives in Hawaii and texted me last night, right after I had got the, the warning on the phone about that earthquake hit, and that there was a tsunami warning. Must maybe 20 minutes later, my brother texted the warning that he got. He lives, his house where he lives is right around the corner from a beach, and, you know, he's gone through tornadoes and other things. Anyway, but his message to me was, "Well, it looks like it's going to be an interesting night." And, you know, these natural things happen, and you think about how, how an earthquake in one part of the world can actually reverberate, literally with a tsunami to another part of the world, and how the natural world works. Pre-scientific world, this is what Elihu is, is referencing here. But storms and its effects, snow, wind, whirlwind, frost, et cetera, all of these elements reveal the power of, of God. But before we go to the next point, think, one scholar said this, and I made a note in my notes here, that there's a possi, could there be a possibility that what Elihu is doing here by referencing the thunderstorms and the natural, what we would call sometimes natural disasters, is because that was one of Job's afflictions? Remember, it was a horrible storm that wiped out his home and his livestock and his business, essentially. Could this be Elihu's way of saying, "Well, see? See what happened? You're, you're being an unjust human being, being someone who God is punishing, is using His tools, His ways of dealing with the world, He's using them as God does." Yet again, Job, another data point, if you will, of why you should turn and repent. And then finally, Elihu makes this one last appeal to Job, that he recognizes his weaknesses or his sins, and conversely, recognizes God's perfection and strength. Again, chapter 37 here, Lutheran Study Bible. "The awesome power of a storm reminds us how truly small we are. Elihu tells Job to abandon obstinacy and, with proper fear and trust, to submit to God as His Lord, thereby preparing Job for God's visit in the whirlwind," which is coming up here. "In the whirlwind." Could this be, okay, Elihu's just talked about Job, and God comes in the whirlwind, and God comes in the storms, and God comes in the lightnings, and He's so powerful, you can't comprehend. And then when God does show up, He comes in a whirlwind, making the point maybe, and then maybe making something else, as we'll see. "All of the days of our lives are spent in such preparation. Though we may become distracted by many things in this life, both bane and blessing, God prepares us for His visitation, when all that will matter will be our confidence in His grace through Jesus Christ our Lord." And so that is our hope, that no matter what we walk through in this life, no matter what we experience in this life, we are in His grip, we are in His grace, we're in His presence. And can't say it any more or differently, the unknowing of God's working at times, sometimes it's clear, the mystery is part of living in this world, part of our humanness and our limitations, and an understanding of who God is. and an understanding of who God is, that God is wholly other than us. But what we know of God revealed in his word, and what we see particularly in Jesus Christ is, is that God is also good. Again, I'll say it one more time. We may not know the answers to why we suffer, or why we're going through suffering. But we know what the answer can't be, and the answer can't be that he doesn't care. Otherwise, Jesus wouldn't have come. Otherwise, Jesus wouldn't have experienced what he experienced. You know, it's telling that in the, and sometimes this is missed in the telling of the story, but when Jesus is, is calming the storm in the Sea of Galilee, the Mark 4, I believe, where he's asleep in the boat, and the storm is, the disciples are trying to bail the boat out, and they're scared, but they come to Jesus and wake him up. And the first words out of their mouth is what? Lord, don't you care? See, their assumption was Jesus didn't care. They had no concept that Jesus, until afterwards, had the power to calm the storm, and did in fact calm the storm. But that's usually the question, the, the question that frames our, our doubts. God, do you care? Do you even know what I'm going through? Do you even, are you, are, you know, are you, are you there? And our faith and our promises from Jesus tells us, yes, he does care. And he is there. And there isn't anything that will separate us from his love. Let's start to wind it up for this morning with chapter 38. And we're getting close to the God's appearance here. Well, actually, we are at God's appearance, sorry. Okay, chapter 38, here we go. Then the Lord answered Job out of the whirlwind and said, who is that this that darkens counsel by words without knowledge? Dress for action like a man, I will question you, and you make it known to me. Where were you when I laid the foundation of the earth? Tell me, if you have understanding. Who determined its measurements? Surely you know. Or who stretched the line upon it? Or what were its bases sunk? Or who laid its cornerstone, when the morning stars sang together and all the sons of God shouted for joy? So God's answer, and chapters 38 through 40 begins God's response to Job, can sound abrupt. Maybe we were expecting, hey, Job, buddy, I'm here, don't worry about it. God doesn't answer that way. And we'll see, again, we'll see why when we get to the very end. But here's the question. If we view the book of Job, and many do, through the frame of the book is about suffering and divine justice, why do we suffer as, as, as human beings? Or why does God allow suffering? Then we're going to see that really, God doesn't give an explanation about that. He doesn't, and that's the truth. Job doesn't answer the, the, what's called the theodicy question. Theodicy is Theo, God, DK, justice. And it's, theodicy is the theological study of how a just God can allow suffering. Now, there are philosophical arguments and Christian arguments and, and all of that, but that's not what God is defending here. He's not. If that's how you look at, if this, again, the frame of how we look at Job. If we look at Job through the frame of God's relationship with Job, and importantly, consequently, his relationship with us, then we will, we will see that God's not giving direct answers to Job's questions still can satisfy us, because what we have here is God actually responding nonetheless. Does that make sense? Am I with me? He may not give us the answers, but he is the answerer. He is there. And what he's going to do, and when he's, back to Job now specifically here, he is going to remind Job that there are realities and intricacies in this life and in his life and in the world that Job just cannot fathom. So out of the whirlwind, God comes. The word whirlwind, Hebrew, the word is sa'ar, and it literally means a storm, wind, tempest. It was a very common manifestation of, of God, particularly in the Old Testament. As Elihu, as we just saw a few verses earlier, Elihu makes the point that this is how God works very often. He comes in these natural revelations, the power. I think, unless some of you may know, I think still to this day, do, are there not in insurance policies, things that, I don't know if they're exemptions, but say acts of God, where people, even companies, whether they believe in God or not, say, you know, look, there are these things that we can't control, and maybe, and probably, we won't cover it if something happens to you, because, yeah, it's from God, you know, sue him. I don't know. But interesting, acts of God, is that, is that true? This is a picture in the Palestinian area near, near Lebanon of an approaching storm. It's a modern picture. But this scholars believe could, was likely the, the picture that the ancients had of seeing like God coming in, God's presence. And you could see why, if you're, and we've experienced this too, where, oh, gosh, last, when was it when we had those winds? And I probably will not ever forget standing in my kitchen at 2:00 in the morning, looking out my window, watching these huge trees going literally sideways, and a wind that I had never seen before, because it was historic, as we all know, and unfortunately destructive. Those poor people, some of you still haven't had their houses, gosh, oh, I tell you. But that, you just, and then, but it was like you stand there and you, there's nothing, you can't stop the wind. I mean, it was, it was a Wednesday morning when that happened, because I remember getting up, and the reason I was up at 2:00 is because I figured the power's going to go out at any time. Got to get ready for being here. And so got ready at like 3:00, and pull out of my driveway, and my neighbor's tree blew over into my driveway. And I thought, oh, well, how am I going to get out of here? And was able to at least move some branches to the side so that my car could get through, and I could, you know, could get here and, and all of that. But the, but that, you know, that power, that force. And if you think, before we knew what Santa Anas were, and how science works, and temperature drops on stuff, that the, the ancients understood, that's, that's God's power coming in. And so God would show up in this whirlwind, in this, in this presence, because like the wind, and isn't it significant? I think God just knows us. I don't think, I know he knows us. The word for spirit in Hebrew and Greek is the same word for wind and breath. And, you know, I can't, I, I couldn't see the wind on that morning, but I could see the effects of the wind with blown trees and trash, you know, flying down the street and, and all of those kind of things. It's the same with the spirit of God. We don't see the spirit of God. We don't see God, but we can see his effects. We can see him working. We can see him in changed lives. We can see him in our, in, in the waters of baptism, and in the bread and the cup at Holy Communion, ways that God makes himself manifest. And just think about that, the juxtaposition of, in the Old Covenant, the idea was God shows up primarily in thunderstorms and whirlwinds and lightning, and Jesus comes, and God says, no, I show up in water. I show up in bread and wine. That's how I show up now. And I don't show up to destroy, I show up to heal. I show up to, to love. I show up to give grace. I show up to give cleansing. That's what we, we know from, from Jesus Christ. And so let's, this last point, we're about, I mean, over time. The Lord answers, and I'm going to come back to this point next week, but I want to start with this. The Lord answers, is significant? It is significant that this word is used. There were multiple words used for God, multiple words used for God. Elohim, Adonai, in Hebrew. Here it is, as you can see, yawa, or as we would say today, yahweh. It was an intentional word that was meant to be unpronounceable. As you can see with yawa, and of course, we transliterate it in English, yahweh, or as the King James Version did, Jehovah, they added vowels so that it is pronounceable. The Israelites, Old Testament, they didn't want it pronounced, because you are not worthy to say the name of God. And so in many ways, back to wind, breath, spirit, you were to breathe God's name. And so you would, it was believed, would inhale and go, yah, way. And you, as, as you breathed in, saying God's name, and breathing out, saying God's name, you were reminding yourself that God gave you your breath, that your breath, my breath, we also have a spirit, a numa in Greek, ruach in Hebrew, same, wind, breath, spirit, same, same word, to remind us that we are God's creation, that we have the spirit of, of, of God in us if we're baptized believers. And most importantly, yahweh was the name of the covenant Lord. If you look in your Bibles, you will see whenever the word Lord is used in all caps, it is translating yahweh, because it is saying, this is the covenant Lord. So what Job is showing, what God is doing here, and what the author, what Job is writing here for us in chapter 38, is not just any God showed up, the covenant Lord showed up. Yahweh showed up. The one, and what's the significance? A covenant God, and this was before the covenant was made. So this is again, significant. A covenant is based on a bigger, higher power making an agreement with a lower power to say, I am here for you, I will do this and thus for you, and here's what I'm asking you to do in return. Called a suz, get into the weeds, Susarian covenant, but it was an ancient Near Eastern covenant. And that reflected the idea of what God does with it. God says, I'm giving you myself, I come to you, I promise to love you, I promise to be with you, I promise to, ultimately, you will be made whole. All things will be made well ultimately. You may go through tough times for a season, but I am your Lord. I have made an agreement with you, and I will not break my covenant with you, and that you can count on. And so it is in that relationship that God is answering Job and answering us. And that, as we will see, will be the literal foundation upon which God then answers, or yahweh answers, or better says, challenges, confronts Job with his concerns and his fears, and as we'll see, excuse me, with ours as well. Okay, let's pray. Lord God, thank you again that you are faithful, even when we don't understand, even when we can't see, even when we, Lord, are not faithful. You remain faithful. Lord, you are all-powerful, all-knowing, omnipresent. Yet you are also personal, intimate, in this time and place, allowing us to live and move and have our being in you, Lord. And so Father, may we cling to you today and every day, trusting in your mercy, trusting in your love, as we seek to serve you through our lives. Again, Lord, thank you for everyone here and for this opportunity to be together. So now, Lord, send us out to serve you, Lord God, to love you, to live for your glory. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. All right, have a great rest of your day, and we'll see you next time. Thanks again for being here.